There, accommodate.
I left all technology upstairs, ran down with my paper, because we could.
All right, well, welcome, everybody. It's August 20th, 2020. It's good to be back in person, back at the town hall. Hopefully, everybody can hear us. If you can't, please let Tim know, and we'll try to make any corrections. This meeting is recorded as well. For the first time in a while, we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, with liberty and justice for all.
So, call the meeting to order. We have an agenda in front of us tonight, which was published as well. The first thing on the agenda, as it usually is, is public comment. Susan, I didn't receive anything online this week.
I did not either.
Okay. So, we'll move on, I guess, to our reports. Again, this week, I don't have anything further of substance on the building committee, and I don't believe there's any other committees.
SST.
SST. So, it was a Zoom call. It was, people froze. From what I understood, Susan was a little ahead, that they gave the program or what they thought was going to the schools of our school district, and when we asked for it, it seemed to be a miscommunication somehow, so I don't know if it sent anyone. I never know.
Oh, I didn't know that. Okay. So, I received late yesterday. I thought I sent, didn't I forward it to you? Maybe not. I might have thought you got it, so I apologize for that. But I did get a reopening plan from them, not in the level of detail that ours is, but I do have that, and we'll share that, and was going to put it up on our website. Our website's going live on Monday, and we've been working to put a section on school reopening, and that will be a link right in there, so parents can have that. And I will make note of that when I send my email out, or my update out to the community this week.
So, from what I'm reading, it is SST's intention to go in person.
They are.
Yeah.
And they do have a remote option, so that if there is a challenge, for some reason, and a student needs to, you know, for whatever reason, or opts to go remote, there is a way in which they will be able to access their education there. Kids from Newmarket and all schools are going to try their very best to keep kiddos in cohorts, so our kids, when they're seated in a classroom, will be in close proximity to each other, so that, again, the contact tracing, and in a way, and cross-contamination. They're going to use multiple entrances, same basic program, you know, we're proposing. And I'm guessing they're communicating, although she didn't say. I'm guessing our parents receive information directly from SST and will be receiving that, but I can double back with her on that, about what entrance and all of that, as they get closer to opening.
So then, we have to decide, are we going to leave our kids to drive, or is that?
They're encouraging, like we are, to not do the busing piece, but we are prepared, I believe. We're working on, yeah, providing regular transportation. The only glitch that I could see is that in the afternoon, there's, our buses may, and may, okay, because we haven't finalized our own busing schema, that there might be a conflict with the four students coming back to us.
Right.
Catching a bus when they get here. But I don't know if they would be driving or not, or whatever. So, that's the only transportation glitch that I've been able to identify to date.
And I know all this stuff is, you know, it's a work in progress. It really is for everybody. But in terms of SST, will it be difficult, Susan, to keep our folks together? I mean, you might have a kid taking aquaculture, nursing, you know, electrical program. How are they all in one classroom for that?
In one classroom, they'll be seated. Our kids that are in nursing, for example, will be seated in the nursing class in a cluster.
Okay, got it.
That's the way it was explained.
And, okay. Any questions on that?
Thanks for that update.
Susan.
Okay, I just, I'll be really quick. I just wanted to mention, while we're on camera, that, of course, I'll be sending out another update to families this weekend, as soon as I can. If not tomorrow, it'll be on Saturday, and that we'll have a town hall meeting for parents, and I just wanted to check. I was thinking to do that at about 6:00 on Tuesday evening. So, I would send this level of our plan out, the same way we've done each and every time, and then we hold a town hall to answer as many questions as we can. And meanwhile, we're going to move forward with the third level of our planning. I also did want to mention, you know, we're actively working on the schedules, and it's not just scheduling, it's room assignments. It's a very complicated situation, where we're trying to figure out transportation and all of that, which influences how much instructional time we have. Of course, in this model of cohorts, you know, we have to figure out how we're going to provide everybody with lunch, because they're not rotating around. It's just very complicated. So, that, I just want to be clear, that parents are not going to do until just before their kids come. So, we don't want to be sending out drafts and misinformation to confuse anybody, and I just want to set that expectation, so you're not wondering why you're not getting that. Meanwhile, we have come to protocols and how we're going to handle things. We have information about, you know, if a child gets sick, what does that look like, screening processes, all of that stuff. We've done tons and tons of work, and I will share as much as completed as I can. You will be getting that in the next couple of days. So, I just wanted to give an update and a heads up about another town hall meeting, 6:00 Tuesday evening.
Thank you, Susan.
Yep.
All right. Next item up is Jana, fund balance retention. That's in our packet as well.
Hi. Can you hear me okay, everyone? So, you probably remember this from years past, but in 2014, the voters in Newmarket voted to authorize the school district to retain up to two and a half percent of your net assessed value. The purpose of this is an emergency contingency. We can't access it at will, however. There are lots of strings attached. You have to go through and get approval of the DOE, so it's not like it's extra money for the school district. But I think certainly, in this particular year with COVID-19, it makes sense to maybe do that from your unrestricted fund balance from 1920 to carry forward as a measure. This requires a board vote. You don't have to vote the full two and a half percent. My recommendation is that you do, because we do have that available to us, but it's within the board's discretion to choose a lesser amount, should you choose.
Jana, could you just explain what happens to this money next year? So, is it automatically returned to the taxpayers if it's not spent?
Yep. Unless we receive that special recommendation and permission from the state, the state DOE, to use this money, it basically just reverts back to the town at the end of the year.
So, there's no count or anything? It's just strictly?
I mean, just, yeah, it goes back to the fund balance.
It's not like we're collecting it or anything. We're just holding on to it for a year. If we don't use it, we?
Exactly. And we, in what I've been able to see, we haven't used it yet. We put it aside, and we adjust it every year based on our net assessment, but we haven't really had to tap it yet.
And since 2014?
Yeah. I don't see that we have used it.
That's great.
I think that, given the uncertainty of what's coming before us with COVID, it makes sense to, especially since you tell us that it hasn't been used in the past.
Yeah.
I think it's a good thing to have a sort of a safeguard there, just in case with potential expenses that we're going to have.
Jana, in terms of timing, is that something we have to do? Is there a deadline?
Yeah, because I have to do the DOE 25 and the MS 25 that goes into setting process, and that due date is August 31st. I would be asking the board for a vote tonight, so that our accountants, we're getting very close to having our audit done as well, and they need to take that figure into consideration in the final audit preparation as well.
Any other questions? Tonight, we'd seek a motion to approve the fund balance request.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Is it unanimous? Thank you.
Thank you.
We heard Amy remotely. I forgot to mention to folks that Amy's a little under the weather, and she's home, but she's still a trooper, and she's joining us. Thank you, Amy.
You're welcome.
So, capital improvement program.
Jana, you're up for the CPI?
Oh, sure. So, as you can see from the packet materials you received, we received a letter from Steve Fornier at the town. They are asking us to update the capital improvement program items. Each department in the town puts pieces into that and proposals. Just because it's in the plan doesn't mean it moves forward, but these are things that, last year, Just because it's in the plan doesn't mean it moves forward, but these are things that at last year, in 2019, you were looking at. And I've put in the sheets that kind of show you what was there. But I'd be looking for the board, direction from the board, is, you know, are these projects still something that you would like to move forward with in this year's capital improvement plan? And if so, do you have any changing as to the ranking of these, which would be your priorities? Because obviously, the town has a difficult job, the budget committee has a difficult job of picking which things from all the departments matter. So I think it's very helpful to them if we can kind of prioritize our needs. And certainly, if there's anything else that you wanted to consider, I could work at pulling information together to propose as well.
Yeah, I read these things. They were familiar to me at the time, and I just, I think, still worthy. The only question I had is whether immediately and even more broadly, whether the administration has thought of other things that we might want to consider.
At this time, given the fact that we're just finishing this amazing project, the building project, I think other than unanticipated things that might arise that we hadn't anticipated, I'm not sure that there's anything, I don't know yet, but I don't know of anything that we would have as an immediate need. One thing that has come to light as we start discussing the flow and the number of students who will be driving and staff members is, I wondered if maybe the expansion of the parking lot, which hadn't been really something that was necessary after the new project, I wondered if that might be something we might want to prioritize a little bit more because now we have more students driving, more people bringing their own cars and distancing. So that would be my only thought for you to consider is perhaps maybe that one might, if you had to pick a project, that one might be one of the greater priority, since we don't know how long this situation might last.
I chose that one, and I also chose the courtyard because that is classroom space. Spring comes, if we have a nice day.
Outdoor space.
It's outdoor space.
And so the process would be that if, in theory, we, you know, decide to go forward, we'd incorporate that into our budget for this coming year?
Right. We would kind of spread it out. This is, I believe it's 20 through 26 is kind of the window we're looking at. So we could kind of look at, they look at all the projects together so that we don't, the town doesn't hit one big wall up all in one year, but we could certainly put those forward as our priorities and spread it out. And then when it's in the capital improvement program, then we can look at, you know, putting a warrant article on if need be or finding that money in our budget as needed in mind of the big picture, which is the whole town is paying for all the departments, so.
Right, right.
Hey, Jana, this is...
Yes. I'm sorry, you surprised me.
About the playground. Wasn't there some type of fundraising or warrant?
My understanding, Susan may be able to take this better than I, but I do think there's a history there.
Yeah. So you're right, absolutely right, Amy, that the PTA has been doing fundraising for, I'm going to guess, two years now.
Yeah.
I know it started before I arrived last year. They had raised some, and they had been raising money last year. But also remember that once COVID hit, some of their big fundraisers that we had planned, including the Globetrotters, maybe they're not called Globetrotters or Harlem Trotters, or something, we had to cancel all of those. So I don't think that they've been able to pursue the level of funding. Also, the board put forth a warrant article for 50, for up to $50,000 that if we had the money available at the end of the year, that it would move into our facility trust fund earmarked for that, and that did occur. So we transitioned $50,000 at the end of this year into that. I would agree with you, though, Amy, that that would also be something I would like to see as a priority. So if we said paving the parking lot, because our circumstances have changed, and we have more parking needs right now, and the courtyard, as Elizabeth had said, priority, and then at the elementary school, I would say, off the top of my head, it would be the playground. Again, if nobody's allowed to be playing on the playground this year, you know, that might not be something that we'd be doing. But I think it would go through the budget process, and then town meeting would vote the funding, I'm guessing, in the same way in which we did that this year. And then the potential opportunity to do the work would be the summer. So it's not necessarily...
Okay, Jana, sorry, Susan, that $50,000 that we put in the warrant article, is that included in this price for the playground in 2012?
It's not reduced by. So the amount of money that was estimated, again, by the time we get the money raised, this estimate could be higher. If we do it sooner, right now, with a lot of the downturn in, you know, projects available for workers to do generally because of COVID, maybe we get a better price. I don't know. But the first step is to raise all of the resources needed to do this project, and then we go forward with going out to bid.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Are we comfortable with the classrooms that weren't updated being kind of deprioritized then? Are they in good shape and just need to be updated a bit?
Well, we weren't, Jana and I talked about this, and it wasn't, we haven't been able to get ahold of Greg to explain exactly specifically what he was, what was there. And because Jana's just gotten here, and we've just been running so fast with the COVID and school opening planning, we just couldn't come up with an explanation. So it might be a higher priority, but Sean is not saying, you know, this is, I've got to have this, or...
Just to bring this down to context is that, you know, we're not, I don't think prioritizing these things here today. We're saying whether or not they go on our list.
Right, right.
And then we can have further discussions about what we might want to, you know, do.
I think that that classroom might have been the gas for the labs. Do we have, does the chemistry lab have gas?
That was a separate warrant article.
Okay.
And, yeah. So we just weren't sure. We've got, we've got stuff, you know, but to Mike's point, this list is the same list that we put forward last year. We're not adding anything to it right now. We haven't had time to really sit down and process it, given the pandemic. And so we just wanted to move this forward because they're asking us to please bring forward our list, and that's why we're here tonight.
I think over the years, our process with the board has sort of evolved into really looking at what are the long-range projects, but also what are the things that can be put in the operating budget on an annual basis, because, which might be different than another department of the town. So I think our process with CIP is different than the other parts of the town.
And if we have other things come up as we go through the process, which is shortened, I think, till mid-September, we haven't missed a vote. There are nothing we'd probably do this year, and we couldn't do this year anyways, because we haven't budgeted for it.
Right, right.
There's opportunity. This is just, we're being asked tonight to approve the list that's before us, and it's not written in stone, and we can add to it later on.
No, and it's very clear, you know, just because it's on this list doesn't mean that it's something that is going to happen in that time. It's just a planning program to allow the town to kind of see what's out there on the horizon and kind of take a more global look at what the needs of all the departments are together.
It's a good thing, and it's a good thing that we have our meetings with the towns. We discuss these things so the taxpayers aren't hit, you know. We're all kind of working from the same page and not hit all one year with the town thing and a school thing. We can try to stagger them.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. So I guess I'd just be asking the board, you know, based on your feedback, it seems that you're okay with putting these projects forward the same as they were. I'll look at updating any cost figures that might be associated with them, so we're dealing with more relevant costs. And we'll proceed. They would like this back by August 27th, so I think I can pull that together and get that to them next week. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do they need to vote? Does this require a formal vote?
I don't believe so, as it's a planning document. It wouldn't hurt. I would never discourage a vote, but...
Yeah, we have it on our agenda as approved. We can do it. We don't, no need to debate it too much here, but we can certainly approve it if the board's comfortable doing that tonight. When's the 27th? Is that next Friday?
It's Thursday.
Thursday?
It's our first CIP meeting. It's Thursday.
Okay. So, you know, I mean, if we, I think we'll talk about this later, but we're, you know, contemplating maybe another board meeting next Thursday. It would be, you know, a little late, so to approve this. So I would suggest that we entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Any further thoughts and questions? And the motion is to approve the capital improvement program for physical year '21 to '27. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. That's unanimous?
The next item is a donation. So our wonderful education foundation has given a donation of $270 for our robotics team. This was another one of those that had been tucked away in a file to be deposited a couple of months ago. And, you know, the business office reached out to say this is kind of a little late, you know, robotics got canceled. Do you still wish to move forward with this? And they said yes. So we need for you to accept the donation, and we will move forward with setting it aside in the student activity account for the robotics club.
Thank you again to the NCEP. I wish I had this problem of finding checks that had... We have them all now?
I think so.
Okay. So this is good news, though. So may I entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
From the heavens, Amy. Gary seconds. Any further thanks or questions or any?
As always, thanks, NCEP, for your help.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. And move down to the MOA regarding the teacher association.
Nope.
You're fine, though.
You're fine.
No state secrets here.
And we did that, Mike.
Yeah, we did that.
We did the MOA?
Mm-hmm, in the non-meeting.
No, we need to...
Oh, whoa, whoa, whoa.
Yes, we discussed it, non-meeting. We just have to move to approve.
I make a motion to approve the teachers' MOA.
Second. No further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Amy, are you there?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
I'm here.
Thank you.
Aye.
It's unanimous. And then finally, we have a leave of absence and nominations?
Yes, we had a paraprofessional request a leave of absence for the upcoming year, and so we move forward asking for the board's support in this request.
And you're seeking a motion?
Mm-hmm, I am.
That was, there was a summary of that in our materials.
Yep.
Are there any questions before we consider that?
No questions.
May I seek a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Gary, I'm not really, are you saying aye?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, aye.
Maybe my right ear is shot or something. I just want to make sure you're logging in. So the last thing is nominations. Quick hiring update, Susan. I know that you're updated spreadsheets in our materials.
It is. Accepted resignations. We had Stephanie Wetzel, who I mentioned at the last meeting that we'd issued a contract to. We're so very pleased to have her join us, all the way from California with over a dozen years of teaching experience. We have her contract in hand. I wanted to let you know that. And then sadly, our computer science teacher, Michelle Marrow, is not going to be able to join us. Circumstances in her personal life will prevent her from being able to join us. So we are actively seeking a computer science teacher. So those were the only two, other than this letter, leave of absence request. I do have several interviews that I will be doing tomorrow and over the weekend, but I haven't secured them yet.
Any questions? Hearing that, I think that brings us to the end of the agenda. I have no other further business. How about the rest of the board?
Just approve of the minutes.
The minutes, yeah.
Yep. A motion to approve the July 13, 2020 public minutes.
It's August 13th.
Yeah, it says July, should mean August.
Yep, good point.
Good catch. Any edits or changes for those minutes?
The jobs are dated July 28th, so that's...
Also.
August 13th. But that's all I have.
Any other changes? Amy, nothing?
No, nothing.
Okay.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Second it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 That's, those minutes from the 28th are approved with those changes. Now, I think we're done, and we need to go into non-public session. I might seek a motion, just a minute.
I make a motion to go into non-public based on...
That's what I was seeking.
Oh.
So Mike, I didn't receive that invitation from Erica.
You didn't, Amy?
No.
Okay, so we have a few minutes to figure that out between now and six. We'll figure that out one way or the other.
Okay.
Okay?
So I'll go up and send her one, since she's showing electronically, because this should be in person.
And I just need to make sure...
I thought you'd sent that out.
We have a red folder.
I'm seeing 91A32.
I'll go upstairs and check.
Yeah, I'm not seeing it. I thought you did.
I'll run up and do, I don't need to sit here while you guys find the RSA and go into this. You don't need me for that part. You guys got this.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you.
And I think I probably shifted gears, right, for this part?
We're still on.
I'm not in my normal seat?
Correct.
So I'm hanging up from this right now, correct?
Amy, wait, we're still on.